Hey, guys.
Put a place for the schedule.
I guess we better get going.
Pretty easy.
Like to welcome everybody to the December eighth, two thousand and twenty-four regular meeting of the City Council of the East Bethel, Minnesota. And could we rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll make a motion to approve tonight's agenda with some requested amendments. Add item six J to the consent agenda. That is approving S two traffic solution proposal for additional traffic analysis for Viking Meadows. Removing item seven A one for the ordinance change for further analysis and to be placed on a future agenda when final draft is ready. And removal of item seven A two. And to have that item placed on a future agenda no later than February twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-four.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Any further discussion? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none heard. Are there any presentations in public hearings? If not, we're on to the public forum. And the only person on the public forum is Mr. James Linder. Please come on up.
Over the years, there's, I've been here a couple of times now. There's been multiple ordinance and permit violations next in my next door neighbor. One nine four, one nine Tri, East Try Oak Circle. Back then, they put in a second driveway, this is a little bit of history. They put in a second driveway adjacent to the north side of their property was, which was on the property line next to a tree line that I had there. And around that time, they started construction on addition to their garage. And since then, they have added five accessory structures, three gazebos and two sheds. They redid their deck on their house and put a roof over the deck. And they had a gravel driveway, but they resurfaced the whole thing with asphalt. And back in two thousand and nineteen, when I asked about it, asked the city about the second driveway, they said that they were more interested in the addition to the garage because that had no permit on it. But at the time, they were saying that there was a concern that the non-permeable surface on the property was exceeded. So they eventually, the city, I guess, kind of gave up on trying to resolve it themselves and had to get the court involved. And it kind of languished in court for a couple of years until the beginning of, just about a year ago, when Mr. Kraft, next door neighbor, finally pleaded guilty to adding the addition to the garage without a, without a, without a permit. And there, since then, and then at that time, the court put him on probation. And since then, multiple citations had been sent into the court because of other violations on the property, the gazebos that got added and the driveway and so forth. And most of those violations were taken care of. And the end of, you know, the beginning of November, I got a copy of a letter from Aaron describing what Mr. Kraft needed to complete before the probation period was ended. And at that time, I noticed discrepancies as to what I thought were initially voiced and what was in the letter. So around that time, and this was probably getting close to the end of October, I tried to set up a meeting with Jack and Aaron to discuss what are these rules, what some of them have changed? And if everything is really in compliance or not, and to explain some discrepancies that I thought were there anyway. But there was some other questions I had and it was, they had a bunch of permit violations. And I was trying to find out if, what the penalty is for a permit violation other than, you know, taking stuff down or redoing things. And another question I had was, in that, in that, in that letter, there were only two remaining accessory structures that were described. And at one point, they had three gazebos. But now there were two gazebos left and a storage accessory structure next to the garage. So the, the impression I had is that they were allowed a, one accessory structure and one small, less than two hundred square feet structure. Well, it looks to me like there's still two gazebos there and a, like I say, another storage structure alongside the garage. So I was trying to, you know, get in touch with Aaron and and Jack to discuss those other things that I was told about was they had exceeded the non-permeable surface on the property. And this was back at the beginning of, like, in May of two thousand and nineteen. And they were also requested to have a surface survey done. That was supposed to be done in April, and I was trying to find out whatever happened with that. I was informed that the city told Crafts not to install a roof to the, the deck that they were refurbishing. And, but they did anyway, and I was wondering whatever, what changed their mind on enforcing any of that. And the status of the second driveway, that used to be trap rock, that was removed. And, but yet they still continue to drive on the thing. So my concern was if they continue to drive on the thing, am I going to have any future issues with the trees along the property line? Because in the last two years, I've had to take down three trees. They're kind of close together, it's like a privacy planting. But there is a, also, another thing I was going to ask about is they've got a bunch of trash on the west side of their property. And my, my question was going to be, and I thought there was a, an ordinance in the city to say if they're going to have, you know, a bunch of stuff on the property that it could be hidden behind a, like a privacy fence. So those are the questions I was trying to get some answers to. And I'm still waiting to hear back when I can get together to talk with Matt and Aaron, which is why I'm here.
Okay.
I've been sending emails and leaving voice messages, asking for a meeting. But as of today, I haven't gotten a response back.
All right.
That's it.
Well, thank you for voicing your concerns. And, you know, it's a combination of the change in senior management here, time of year and all that, but I'm sure they'll follow up with you.
Okay, well, like I say, I've been asking for meetings, face-to-face meetings since the end of October. So I understand, you know, when Jack left, he tried to get back to me on some stuff. Aaron has forwarded me things a couple of times. But because of discrepancies as to what I was led to believe were issues in earlier conversations with the city and what it is ending up to be now, I'm just trying to understand what, what changed and why.
Is, is Nick involved in this?
He was earlier. He was, he and the first, Aaron with the E, she, they came out in two thousand and nineteen. And they were the ones that noticed the addition being put on their garage. And the story behind that was the neighbors just blew them off until they finally got the court involved. And then even then, it drug on for another couple of years before they finally pleaded guilty to the court as things started moving in that area. So it's been a long, a long history of, of problems. And, and kind of those are the major ones since two thousand and nineteen.
And to be honest, it's kind of a long history in a lot of different cases, too. There are a number of cases that are frustratingly long-taking. I mean, ten years.
Well, you know, some of them are, you know, because of COVID and some are just because there apparently were times that the, the court hearings got, can got kicked down the road at least four times last, last year. So there's a lot of things that delay it. But at this point, you know, my impression is that Crafts and the city think everything is done. And I'm just trying to get clarified what, what's changed to allow things to be now okay and before they weren't.
What's your address?
One nine, mine's one nine four, two, three, East Try Oak. The neighbor is one nine four, one nine, East Try Oak.
I couldn't find it.
Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I want to thank Mr. Linder for coming in. As of January fourth, we've been communicating back and forth via email. I did send a letter off to Mr. Linder, a December twen, December twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-three letter in which the city says that they're happy to confirm that all pending ordinance violations on the property have been remedied or have been addressed to the satisfaction of the city. I agree, there's been many years of, of issues in history here, majority of which, obviously, I can't address. But, but if there is further violations post-December twenty-ninth, at that point, then the city would obviously need to reengage on those violations.
So as far as Nick is concerned, and Nick is Nick Schmitz, who's the building official for East Bethel, who works for Aaron. That's the current status, is all the violations have been caught up?
According to the December twenty-ninth letter.
Okay, well, that's, that's good news to hear from our standpoint.
Yes and no. And, and the only reason I'm here is there are things that, over the years, the city has said, hey, these are in violation. And, and now some things appear to, to me to have not changed. But in the, in the letter I recently received, it was, oh, everything's okay. So if that's the case, I can accept that. But what I was hoping to get out of this was an explanation. So if it was bad here, why is it okay now?
Yeah, well, that's understandable.
I thought it was reasonable.
Yeah.
And it's hard to, you know, communicate all this stuff back and forth with email because you sometimes miss getting a question answered. That would be a simple answer, but to try to do that in email, especially when sometimes it can be a week, two weeks, maybe several weeks turnaround to get a response back. It's kind of wondering sometimes if you're just being ignored or, or people are busy.
Well, I think I can speak for the members of the City Council. It's our desire to have matters, first of all, equal treatment under the law for everybody. It's not, you know, you know so-and-so, you don't have to obey the law, you know, that kind of stuff. But also timely resolution of matters and complete explanations. So that's our desire. I know it's our staff's desire, so thank you for bringing it to our attention.
Yeah, I think as far as
Something we have to work on continually.
I think as far as what's there is probably going to be what it's going to be in the future. But I was just hoping to get what has changed.
An explanation, yeah, yeah, no, that's reasonable.
Is any of it kind of a health issue or a safety issue?
The only health issue is the trees along my property line. They drive on a lot with a golf cart and a UTV.
On your property?
It's on their, on their property, but it's right up on the roots of the tree on the property line. They, they, what they had was a strip of land between the garage and the trees on the property line.
Right.
And in two thousand and nineteen, they had some people come in and change the rocks out on their lakeshore while they're driving up and down that section between the trees and the garage. Then they put in trap rock from the, the part of their house that faces the lake, all the way up, up to the road. And they were told that, hey, that's, that's a second driveway. So what they did is they put sod over the end of the driveway, so it's, and now it's landscaping.
Whose lot was it?
Their lot.
Oh, they just weren't using it at the time, or?
They got a house and a garage on it. So they weren't driving back and forth for, I don't know, eighteen, twenty years prior to that. And then all of a sudden, in two thousand and nineteen, they had the trap rock put in and then they would drive out of their driveway, out to the road, down the second driveway to go down to the lake. And they, they'd do that for, just because they didn't like to walk, I guess. I mean, they're, they're not handicapped or anything, but.
Well, there isn't supposed to be two driveways. Heck, we don't let people with acreage have to.
And they've got less than an acreage, and Aaron took care of that. And like I say, one of my questions was, okay, they took out the trap rock, they put sod back over the end of the driveway. Are they still going to drive on it and what does that mean to my trees? You know, just clarification.
Sounds like you guys need another visit with Nick, huh?
Mr. Mayor, I'm not, I'm not sure that the city can regulate someone driving on their grass, but we can certainly take a look at it.
I don't know either.
Yeah.
Well, thank you for.
My question there is, when does it change from just driving on your grass to being a driveway? My question years ago is, what changes it from landscaping or from a driveway to landscaping, even though you're driving on it? And I had sent one time over the weekend, they had driven back and forth on that little second driveway like forty times. I said, you know, I had to put up a motion camera and it's like, this is crazy. There's, just keep going back and forth, back and forth. Anyway, I guess my, again, my hope here was to just get a face-to-face meeting and get, you know, the things that I was questioning answered, so.
Yeah, well, I don't think it's unreasonable.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's all I got. We'll wait to hear back from you two guys and see when we can do that.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in.
I believe that concludes our public forum. You're the only person on the forum, so it was all yours. And the next item on our agenda is the consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion?
Nice beer.
Thanks, Joe.
I would like to pull item H, just to ask a question. Anybody else have any?
No, I had a couple of questions on H, now that you bring it up, that's on the.
Okay.
Procurement.
All right, well, then you're on board, too. So Bob and I want to pull item H, otherwise to approve the rest of the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none heard.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just go back for a second. On item I, if you could pull that too and just have a discussion on that.
Okay, can we, can we add item I at this stage?
Motion for reconsideration.
Yeah, that's exactly what the city administrator is correct. Would need a motion to reconsider pulling six I and a second. And that would actually require a two-thirds vote since a majority had voted to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, motion to reconsider.
Second.
Six I. That would be six I, pulling that from the consent agenda approval.
Okay, motion to reconsider item six I on the consent agenda for, for further consideration. Bob DeRoche seconded. All in favor of doing so, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, none heard, that was unanimous. Okay, now we're, now we're complete. Why don't you go first on item H, Bob?
I'm looking for where I had my notes.
Oh, well, mine are right in front of me.
All right, well, you go first, and if it's something that I already.
Just a very simple question. This is on the revision to the city purchasing policy. Should City Council approval is required, that sentence be added to the end of both paragraphs four and five as it is in, at the end of paragraph three? Simple question.
I have it pulled up here, Mr. Mayor, what, what was the question on it?
Go down a little ways further. Further, okay, see at the end of paragraph three, City Council approval is required. Look at the bottom, a little further down, four and five, they're for higher amounts. Shouldn't it just say the same sentence at the end of those two as well?
I'm not sure, Mr. Mayor, that it's a problem to add that. I think the majority of the changes here are just following Minnesota's state statute. The genesis of this was our original purchasing policy was really on item number one here, which was changing from a thousand to twenty-five hundred. The reason for that was it's pretty easy to get to a thousand dollars today without trying too hard on some of the expenses. And so what was happening was staff was driving around, trying to get signatures and spending a lot of time to do that. So bumping this up to twenty-five hundred was kind of the genesis. But then we, we kind of looked at what state statute was pertaining to the numbers. And these changes are in line with state statute.
Yeah, and I agree with, I hear what you're saying, I agree with it. And just as a point of good order, I think that sentence should be added to those two paragraphs. It's, it's not, it's not an embellishment or anything, it's just, just for consistency.
I think so long as the motion is made, Mr. Mayor, to include that sentence in paragraph four and five, we're in good standing.
Yeah, okay. Mr. DeRoche, what do you have to add?
To that note, yeah, it was my thoughts that it was just going to be the twenty-five hundred or less would be handled by. I think what concerned me was there's a couple of phrases in there about the department heads making the decision. And I don't think that's a good idea. I, I say that, you know, and I hate to, whatever, but from past history and expenditures and the city kind of being run like it's an open purse and money just going out, you know, have Aaron double-check it or yourself so that it's not, the department says, well, let's do this and heck, it's only sixty thousand dollars, let's go for it.
Mr. Mayor, a couple of responses to that. First item is that all these expenditures are controlled by the budget. So it's all done within what's estimated for the budget. Secondly, all these expenditures come on your bills list, so you, you can review that under consent agenda as we're doing here, or as we did. And, and third, I do review all these expenses prior to the council meetings to make sure that they're in line with, with reasonable expenditures.
Well, and I want to make sure, especially on big-ticket items, I'll say our lawnmower. Sounds simple enough, but we're paying about sixty-five thousand for with the attachments. And because the city's done business, I used to be in that business. And I handled seventy-five commercial accounts. But that being said, you get in a habit of, these people, well, we always do business with these people. Well, when businesses used to do business with me, there'd be some kind of a discount just for the fact that I guaranteed business. And there's a tendency to want to mark things up a little bit. I don't know if that happens. I've never seen any of the invoices. I can say, when I was on the council last time, I did question it and said, look, before you, I want to see the invoices for this equipment. We were paying fifty dollars for a lawnmower blade. That should have cost about ten. And so you get to a point where people can just buy it. We, we don't, we don't get, we don't see the invoices, we see the bills to be paid. But half the time, you don't know what it is. And, you know, to come in here and ask staff for every single invoice, that's kind of crazy. But that's my thought.
Mayor, if, if I could weigh in. Mayor, if I could weigh in on this with your leave. Councilmember DeRoche, I think your observation is, is very apt. And actually, it was one of those things that I was concerned about when I looked over the policy. Because when we're dealing with procurement, a purchase of any goods or services by law, I, I see a policy I do look it over pretty carefully because I, like you, I want to make sure that the city is procuring and not only meeting the law, but hopefully even kind of exceeding. So I was actually very pleased with this policy because I was looking at what it said about departments. And what it was doing, it was actually providing guidance about, look, you have to get this many quotes. But it was going even further and saying, but, and this is your option. You can get quotes directly from vendors, you can look at, you know, the state procurement, you can go on the open market. So it was giving guidance to the department directors about where they can get it. But it was also setting the floor about, but you have to at least do this. And then I liked what the mayor did is, is looked at that and said, but even when you do that, at the bottom line and adding the amendment, it's going to have to come to this body, the City Council, for the approval. So I, I liked how it also provided the guidance as far as, here are the thresholds as far as the monetary amounts. And as it went up to the thresholds, the additional, you know, processes that the department directors and staff, as well as the city administrator, have to do before they then bring the purchase to the City Council. So especially with the amendment by the mayor, I'm very pleased with this policy. Any other thoughts, guys?
Okay, well, I'll make a motion that we make the amendment that I suggested, just simply adding that one sentence to the end of paragraph four and five and then in the red letter section of this.
Seconded.
It's seconded, any further discussion? Not all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none heard. And the other item was the, we already approved that, the traffic study had done and was part of it, okay. So we're done with the consent agenda, is that it?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I was pulled.
Oh, I.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, my mistake.
And.
Thank you, Matt, or Mr. City Administrator, I can say.
Yeah, so, Mr. Mayor, this ordinance essentially calls out a specific vehicle and a specific dollar amount for this vehicle. What we're experiencing is a difficulty actually trying to get this vehicle, for whatever reason, supply chain issues with Ford. And I think we've been waiting two to three years to actually try and arrive at this vehicle. Perhaps they're selling everyone they make.
Really?
Yeah.
Two or three years.
Yeah, Nate told us that Ford just canceled the order and didn't bother to tell us.
Oh, wow, that's handy.
That was after two years.
Yeah.
So we are, we are back out trying to find something to, to replace that was authorized over two years ago, so.
Wow.
So, Mr. Mayor, I would just, I would just ask that the motion be made to include either this vehicle or an alternate that's comparably priced.
Are we looking at diesel or gasoline, or?
This would be a gasoline. Smaller thirty-mile-per-gallon vehicle, so.
Anybody want to make the motion? If not, I'll make it.
Sure, I'll make that motion that we look for another vehicle, the same or equivalently priced.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none heard.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, and our new business, uh, Brian, you did a good job of laying it out at the beginning when we were doing the agenda. So do we actually need to speak to item seven A1 and do a, a formal postponement, or no?
No.
Already good.
They should be removed.
Okay. Then we're down to department reports, aren't we?
Correct.
And the only thing there is eight, eight G1 with the city administrator and the commission liaison and committee appointments.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, um, or, Mr. Mayor, there is a, um, a kind of a list of the various different committee appointments, of which you've, we reviewed with you and, um, and was sent out in the packet. And, um, if everyone is agreeable to that, I think the only significant change is the Sunrise WMO. Uh, we had, um, Councilmember Mundell appointed to that, and they indicated we could have two people.
Three.
I'm sorry, three people. Uh, so we have a, um, a citizen member, and then an, an alternate possibility in the event that, uh, Councilmember Mundell's not able to attend that meeting. So, after speaking with Councilmember Miller, who serves on the Upper Rim River WMO, um, and some of these, some of these WMOs are quite complicated in, in trying to come up to speed on, it might be, um, prudent to have him serve as an alternate, so.
Yeah, at, at the last Sunrise meeting, uh, they were doing a review of the bylaws, and it was discovered that you can have two members plus an alternative.
Okay.
So that's why, this is where this is coming from.
And you're good with that, Tim?
Absolutely.
Just, just so you guys know, uh, this, Matt called me up and wanted to discuss this, so it was kind of out of the blue. There wasn't much thought put into it, so, on my part, anyway, we just kind of discussed it quickly, and if you guys are okay with. I just don't want to be heavy-handed, because at the end of the day, I'm just another council member. You know, I don't, I don't run you guys or tell you what to do, so.
I really have no interest in the, uh, North Sixty-Five Coalition. I really don't.
Do you want to stick with that, Brian, since you're up to speed on it?
I can do that.
Yeah, let's make that change and just have Brian continue.
Okay.
The North, uh, plus you have the, your right on it with your business and all that, too, so it's, makes sense.
Let's see what the heck else on there.
Think of anything else, anybody?
Who's on the per, oh, Personnel Committee?
Brian and me.
Before?
Brian and me.
You want to switch? I'll take that one.
If you want.
Seems, oh, you're taking the Upper Rim River.
Yeah, that's not a big deal.
Take care of the Personnel Committee, Finance Committee, Economic Development Authority, and the Police Department liaison.
So that's the other changes.
Three changes.
Instead of, uh, Brian on the Personnel Committee, it would be Bob, along with me. And I guess that's it.
And then adding Councilmember Miller as an alternate to Sunrise.
Yeah. We got those?
Yep, if your motion wants to include that.
Who would like to venture that motion?
Make motion to approve as-is with the changes, having Councilmember Miller as the alternate to the Sunrise River WMO, um, changing DeRoche to Mundell for Trump Highway Sixty-Five, and for Personnel Committee, changing Mundell to DeRoche.
Succinctly said. Do we have a second?
Seconded.
Motion's made and seconded, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none heard.
Who's on the Planning Commission?
Any, uh, staff reports or council reports?
Mr. Mayor, if I can, um, I, um, sent a request out to both Carrie and Mike to see if they had any staff reports that they want to provide. And, um, Mike didn't have anything, but Carrie said, uh, that there are, uh, she's currently working on four public record data requests. And, uh, these are increasingly, I might say burdensome to staff in terms of some of the size of them, using up, uh, resources and costs to get those, um, met under, under law. Uh, all the current twenty-twenty-four licenses have been issued. All printed city code books at city call, City Hall have been updated, and we have one more council member to update on that city code. Um, and, uh, as it relates to some of the work that we've been doing on, uh, the Channel Ten Buzz, I would hopefully ask folks, if they're watching, if they hear the buzz at all, but I think we identified it as a power supply, which is about anywhere from seven to twenty dollars, uh, was the problem on this. So we're currently using one on loan until one comes in to try and fix that problem. So I think we've, we've managed to isolate that and, um, and get that fixed. Again, hopefully folks will let us know if that's not the case, but, uh, I believe that's the case on Channel Ten. Uh, additionally, we have, uh, we updated the Wi-Fi in here, so that project is, is complete as well in the chambers. The January newsletter has been reorganized, updated, and is being proofed for, uh, printing, uh, this week and mailing shortly thereafter.
Hallelujah.
I knew you'd be happy about that. We are beginning, uh, worklist for the twenty-twenty-four to twenty-twenty-five website update, so we're continuing working on that. Um, under the, uh, Elections Department, uh, staff and election admin training has already begun for this year. And they want to, uh, let folks know that judge recruitment is currently underway, so election judge recruitment. In the last election, there was a lot of, uh, questions about election integrity. And if folks are concerned at all with that topic, the best way to, to get involved is become an election judge. So, uh, we need folks to apply to become election judges, we need them as soon as possible for the March fifth presidential nomination primary, so that's coming upon us real quick here. Uh, so please, if you're interested in becoming an election judge, now is the opportunity. Um, I think there's a potluck, if I'm not mistaken, in most places, and maybe here as well, so it's, it doesn't come without food, from what my understanding is, so, um, folks can, uh, can participate in that process, and we'd highly recommend they do that. Uh, this morning, I met with, uh, the League of Minnesota City's Risk Management Team, uh, or the individual that represents that. And, um, and there is what is called a mod rating. A mod rating is a factor by which a standard worker's compensation premium is multiplied to reflect an insured's actual loss. Uh, our current, if you, on your premium, if you have a mod rating of one, it's break even. If you have a mod rating less than one, you get a reimbursement or a rebate. Uh, we had in twenty-twenty-three, a mod rating of point eight-eight. So we were getting a reimbursement in twenty-twenty-three. And currently, I'm sorry, in twenty-twenty-two, in twenty-twenty-three, had a mod rating of point nine-three, so it went up a touch. And so in response to that, um, the individual this, uh, this morning gave us information on how to mitigate some of these claims. So for example, if you have firefighters that are going out and might, uh, suffer an injury, how can we mitigate that to include different ways of stretching or lifting or, or training and that sort? So that, that information's been forwarded to our fires department and also our public works folks that, um, that experience some of those muscle strains and things of that nature. So we're, we're looking to try and lower that mod rating if we can, because we'll actually get more rebates, uh, from the premiums that we're paying, so.
Good.
So far, we're in good shape. Uh, but aside from that, Mr. Mayor, I think that concludes the administration's report.
Do you need to step back and approve the resolution for the Nexus appointment? Under a resolution?
Which one is that one?
Uh, twenty-twenty-four dash zero six.
What?
Page forty-seven.
Page forty-seven, we do have one more resolution, Mr. Mayor?
Unless it was incorporated under the committee commission assignments, I think it's a separate resolution in the packet, so that might need independent approval.
So, Mr. Mayor, we have a resolution twenty-twenty-four dash zero six, this is a resolution appointing a city representative to the Nexus Community Advisory Board.
Right.
And, um, that was included in your packet, um, after speaking with Councilmember Smith and Councilmember Miller. Um, they had shown interest in, in being a member and an alternate to that. And, uh, this would be a resolution to approve that, if you would entertain that this evening.
Kind of curious what exactly would they do?
This is part of their, uh, Community Advisory Board that they have, and, um, they provide psychiatric residential services to youth.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the, the predecessor wasn't successful, and so being able to, um, help guide them and, and ask questions, and obviously, we want them to be successful in the community here and provide those much-needed services, so.
So they'd be a voting member?
That's a good question.
It's an advisory board, right?
I believe it's advisory.
Yeah. But to give, I mean, Jim's a very long-term resident of the city, and he knows the city very well. And I think he can give a useful insights into Nexus, since they're new. Um, I'll make a motion that we approve, uh, Jim Smith to be a member and Tim Miller as an alternate on the advisory board for the Nexus, or, excuse me, the Nexus Community Advisory Board.
Does the resolution number need to be in the motion?
Twenty-twenty-four dash zero six. Second it? Anybody?
Seconded.
Oh, Mr. DeRoche seconds it. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none heard.
Have you heard any more complaints from residents on the different volumes? Some people speak a little louder, and other people don't get up close enough, so they can't really hear?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I haven't, uh, Councilmember, uh, DeRoche, I have not heard any complaints as of yet, but it probably has to do with the closeness to the mic, I'm assuming.
Wonder if there's any kind of a view meter we could have on there, so whoever's doing the audio/video, they could mention that to someone.
Hmm.
I mean, people say it enough, and then they just get frustrated and say the heck with it.
We, we do have independent control of every microphone here, and it looks like they're maxed out, so I'm, I'm not sure what else we can do to remedy that other than just the constant reminder of speaking directly into the microphone, I don't know. I, I, unless someone from Creston can go above and beyond the max, I don't know.
Can we get these made up about five times the size?
But I can assure you, you're not the only council that has that issue.
Yeah. Um, I wanted to make a few comments, but before that, any of the rest of you have, uh, council reports?
Yes, they have the ice, but, I mean, there is any ice, is there? On Coon, it was open last weekend.
No, there, there's an open spot where we are out there, but, uh, yeah, there's a lot of ice. I wouldn't go out driving a four-wheeler on it or anything, but, you know.
Um, January fourth, we had a Sunrise River WMO meeting, very good meeting. Uh, covered a bunch of different small topics. The biggest one, though, was the twenty-twenty-five budget discussion. Uh, the proposed budget for twenty-twenty-five was about fifty-five thousand dollars compared to twenty-twenty-four's budget, about forty-seven thousand dollars. These are both with change. And after much discussion, good discussion, we got it down to an increase of only three dollars.
Oh, you guys are fiscally.
Yep, so.
Way to go.
So, and that, uh, should be coming from council, probably next meeting, I imagine.
Thank you. Uh, just a couple of comments. One of the things that's extremely frustrating to those of us on the city council, because our job is to do due diligence on behalf of the people of East Bethel, that's our job, is, but it's a, a bit, uh, unreasonable to think that five people can represent twelve thousand-plus people and know what everybody wants and what the majority of them want. So I've been, just, just by way of information, I've been doing some research on Survey Monkey as a, as a way to literally survey the residents of East Bethel on their opinions regarding development, for example, development projects, how we want zoning changes to be made in the future, and what priorities are as far as what the city government does. And I'm just letting you know that I'm looking into that, just in the early stages. Our next step will be to have a meeting of several of us with the representative from their company, and try to do, try to get it, get the pulse of the people in East Bethel, uh, at a, for an affordable price, too. We don't want to drop fifty thousand dollars on surveying everybody. But that's one item that's being worked on. Uh, second thing is, as, as, uh, city administrator look referred to, the public data requests are coming in, and by law, we have to abide by them. But there's a, a recent quote, public data request, it took a lot of time on behalf of the members of the city council and also on part of our city attorney, and the person who made the request hasn't even come in to look at the results, and they've been available for almost a month. Uh, I don't know legally what's possible to, in such situations, but if you want to, if you want to cost this, this residents of this city money in terms of legal bills and all that, it seems like there'd be some way to dissuade such, uh, behavior. But, uh, you know better than I do whether that's feasible. At, at the, at a minimum, it's going to make us less inclined to be in a hurry to fulfill further ones, because, uh, you know, what's the point? From my personal viewpoint, I'm not speaking for everybody.
Mayor, councilmember, uh, I understand and, and agree, and I think it's, uh, very important for both this body as well as staff and all residents to understand that, um, all aspects of city governance and so forth are important, and that the day-to-day activities of this body, as well as, uh, city staff, uh, need to continue, um, even with data practices requests, and data practices requests are going to be in the queue. Um, public data is available for the public to view and have access to, but not at the expense of city governance and the delivery of city services. And there is parameters and some limited ways to also impose those costs upon those individuals that request. But I also want to underscore two things, and that is, is public data is available for the public, and the ability to impose, uh, costs upon those or expenses is, is limited. But we'll certainly view those particular avenues, but also underscore, um, both, very importantly, to those individuals that would, um, seek data that is not going to be at the expense of the day-to-day work and necessary work of the, of the city. And that, those requests will be responded to on a reasonable, timely basis per the law.
Thank you.
And there's no way for council members to recoup any money that
No.
they might have spent in time.
Unfortunately not. That's one of the limitations with respect to the law.
Yeah.
I don't make the law, I would have a different law if I did.
Where it costs fellow residents money to literally, to the detriment of the city's efficacy in providing services is, uh, onerous, we'll say. Um, there's been some concern, Councilmember DeRoche mentioned it before the meeting, concern people wondering why things are being postponed or tabled or whatever. Uh, again, I, I know it's a little different than things are at a lot of other council meetings in a lot of other towns, where people just, you know, yes, 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 whatever you want, you know. Um, we're trying to take it seriously, doing this due diligence stuff, and it requires, particularly on complex issues, like Nexus was a very complex issue, and, uh, that took us a while. Um, and we don't apologize for doing that in the case of the Capstone Home. And we don't apologize for doing that in the case of the Capstone Home Development. We do not want to be an obstacle to, to private property owners making money on their property and their ability to sell it. That's not the point. What we do want to do is, our decisions have legal consequences and they have consequences for future decisions. And so we want to think through them properly and that's all our intent is, is just to do our due diligence, that's all. It's not serving any kind of purpose other than that. And for the, that particular case, we have a revised traffic study that we just, just got the results of earlier this afternoon. Uh, where we have a, what's called a fiscal impact study, which is the way things should be evaluated in developments. And it's literally like a feasibility study accounting for benefits and costs. When you get into personal interest, people, this group over here wants to only talk about the benefits. Oh, it'll be SAC charges, SAC fees and WAC fees and property taxes. And this group over here opposes any development, the city says, all they can look at is seeing costs. You know, so you got, got to have some kind of a tool that brings both sides together and say, what's the reality here? Benefits and costs, you know? Like everything in life, there's benefits and costs for the most part. And the, and the other issue is a matter of zoning, setting zoning precedents and things like that. And the issue that former mayor Steve Voss brought up about the commercial availability along Sand Hill. So we're not dragging our feet, we're just doing due diligence and we do it as we feel it's responsible, not to frustrate anyone, but just to do, do it to a point where we feel comfortable making decisions. And with that, I'll shut up. And I guess the only thing left is for someone to make a motion we adjourn.
No, I got, I got one thing.
Oh, oh, now you pipe up.
I was waiting for you.
Yeah, I know. It could be a long time, huh?
I'd like to ask Matt, can you put an evaluation of all of our department heads together in the city and staff? And I understand there's like something called three sixty, just so we can get evaluation and make sure that we're on the up and up with everything and it's all running smooth. That's it, thank you.
Well, that, I can make a move to adjourn.
Seconded.
Motion made and seconded to adjourn. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, none heard.